Okay, we will start with our study session with a few songs to sing. Thank you all for joining. We have sixteen participants right now. Thank you for spending your valuable time and joining in. We will sing two songs and start with the session. For those who don't know the song, it will come on the screen. And if you know the song, you can sing along. It's a very ancient, I mean like old song, we all sang it since we were small. And the songs are "Lord, I lift your name on high" and "Light of the world", you can sing along if you want. And I will sing it with my sister.
"Light of the world", "You step down into darkness", "Open my eyes, let me see", "Beauty that makes this heart adore you", "Hope of a life spent with you", "So here I am to worship", "Here I am to bow down", "Here I am to say that you're my God", "You're altogether lovely", "All together worthy", "All together wonderful to me", "King of all days", "Oh so highly exalted", "Glorious in heaven above", "How may you came to the earth you created", "All for love's sake became world", "And here I am to worship", "Here I am to bow down", "Here I am to say that you're my God", "You're altogether lovely", "All together worthy", "All together wonderful to me", "So here I am to worship", "Here I am to bow down", "Here I am to say that you're my God", "You're altogether lovely", "All together worthy", "All together wonderful to me", "I never know how much it cost", "To see my sin upon that cross", "I never know how much it cost", "To see my sin upon that cross", "I never know how much it cost", "To see my sin upon that cross", "So here I am to worship", "Here I am to bow down", "Here I am to say that you're my God", "You're altogether lovely", "All together worthy", "All together wonderful to me", "So here I am to worship", "Here I am to bow down", "Here I am to say that you're my God", "You're altogether lovely", "All together worthy", "All together wonderful to me".
Thank you all, that was credit to Amanda for guitar. Welcome to all who have joined today, thank you for joining. And I, I am DL. And I'll be leading the session for today. This study session is organized by UESI, that stands for Union of Evangelical Students of India. And the primary aim of this organization is to reach out to students in various campuses and share with them the love of Christ and the gospel to them. Currently, this organization is thriving very greatly in many states of this country. And I, on behalf of this organization, would like to invite all of you participants who have joined today, which comprise of students, pastors, graduates, staff, prayer partners and friends from all over the world. I appreciate your valuable presence and spending your time for this thirty-sixth study session today. Today's study session is on the topic, "Dying to ourselves and living for Christ", it will be taken by a very young pastor, Jason Job, who is with us right now, with his video on, if you can see him. He is right now the principal of Kilgal Bible College and also the pastor of Kilgal Church, which is both located in Mahsa, Goa. He and his family together serve the Lord in, related to the church and also in this ministry. He has a very beautiful wife and two children, Rachel and Oswin, and they are currently studying. Not his wife, but two children. And their family involvement in the UESI ministry is really commendable. Before we begin, I'd like to give a few instructions. All participants, please carefully pay attention. Please rename yourselves in the following format. Your name, the first name which everybody calls you, your name, and the name of the institution you study in or work at. For example, I have named myself DL. My name is DL and I study in Kamil College, so I have named it DL, comma, Kamil. Please edit and rename yourselves accordingly. Also, till the entire session, please remember and keep in mind to keep yourselves muted. If you're comfortable, you can keep your video on, but it is very important to keep your mics off if you're not intending to talk. After the session, there will be some time given to clarify your doubts. If you want to add something, you'll be allowed, you have the time to do that. Please keep all your questions and comments to the end. You can chat anything on the chat box. So without further delay, I'd like to thank Pastor Jason for coming and taking the session for us today. We are happy to have you uncle, thanks for coming. We'll start with a short prayer and over to you uncle. "Honey Father, thank you for this wonderful time, thank you for brought us here, thank you for this ministry, thank you for you to care of each one of us wherever we are and helped us to attend this session today. Thank you for the wonderful topic, dying to ourselves and living for Christ, what we supposed to learn more about this topic through your servant, please speak through him. And I pray for him also, take care of his internet facilities, help it not to get cut in the middle, please help it to be stable and help all of us to be blessed through his session. Take care of his family and bless all his needs and his efforts in the ministry. Thank you Lord for all the other participants, please help all our internet connections to be stable and help us to have a wonderful session today. Please bless us all, please, thank you for knowing everything is going, that is going in our lives. Thank you for everything. In Jesus's name, I pray amen." Over to you uncle.
Amen. Thank you very much, DL, thank you for that nice introduction. And I praise God, it is an privilege for me to be come in this meeting and sharing a few thoughts with you. And I praise God for each and every one of you and what you are doing. And praise God for the ministry of UESI and how wonderfully that being done here in this place in Goa. And I praise God for the leadership of Brother Samson and Stephen and all others and who is involved in that. And I just want to say thank you and pray that this ministry maybe grow day by day and see that many students and many people maybe reach out. And I pray that my prayer is there. And praise God this once again, this privilege, as we come together to study the word of God. And the topic was, we, as you know, that dying to ourself, living for Christ. It's a beautiful topic and I praise God for that. And let me read a verse from the scripture and in regard to this topic. And I like to take your attention, Galatians chapter two, verse 20. And Paul is writing to the Galatians and that verse, chapter two, verse 20, Galatians chapter two, verse 20. It's written like this, "I have been crucified with the Christ and I no longer live, but Christ lives in me. The life I live in the body, I live by faith in the Son of God, who loved me and gave himself for me." Paul is writing this letter to the Galatians. Galatians is one of the Gentile people, those who came to the Lord. And he was writing this letter to them and saying that the word, which is very beautifully said, "I have been crucified with the Christ and I no longer live, but the Christ lives in me." As our topic is that dying to ourself and living for Christ. You know, when Paul is writing this letter, there is a few things in his mind. Because we know the Paul and before he was converted, before he encountered with Jesus, the life which he was living was in a very different life. So we can see that in the same book, Paul is mentioning about it. You know, when we read Galatians chapter five, verse 24, and he was saying here, "Those who belongs to Christ, Jesus has crucified the sinful nature with its passion and desires." You know, Paul is saying that his whole sinful nature is being crucified. What need to be die? The first things we need to be understand, we need to be crucify our whole sinful nature. You know, that need to be die, the sinful nature need to be die. You know, there are two kinds of people in this world. It's not the white or black or rich or poor. It's just, we can say that it is a dead in sin or dead to sin. Some of who died in sin, they died in sin. And another one is the one who dead to sin. They alive to God, they dead to sin. You know, that we read in the scripture. And we can see that the people who died in sin as well as dead to sin. We know Paul was in a, born and brought up in a Jewish background and he is a member of a Sanhedrin. And he having all the power, he is a Roman citizen and tribe of Benjamin. And when we read in the Book of Philippians, we read, we can understand that he was talking about all the things he can boast about it. And he was in such a, such a way that he was doing. And he was very eager for his religion. And he is very passionate for that. And with all the permission of the high priest, he is going to be persecuted, the Christians, who in those time that is a, one who is following Christ. And it's a new, new way of life is the people living. And he was very upset about them because the many people are joined with this group and so-called Christians. So he was jealous and he wanted to be persecuted each and every one of them and destroy them. And in his passion and in his desire, he began to move towards that. And while on the way to the Damascus, we can see that he encountered with Jesus. And when he encountered with Jesus and his life has been changed. See, one of the things we see that, you know, you can encounter with Jesus anyplace. See, here the Paul, he have encountered with Jesus on the road. You know, it's not necessary to be in the meeting, it's not necessary to anywhere that you can be encountered with Jesus. This man, he was on the way that he met Jesus. And we know that his life has been changed. When his life has been changed and he is a different person. And so what we see that a sinful nature of the Paul is been changed. You know, one of the main thing that dying ourselves is, is exchange life. You know, his life is changed with the life of a Christ. That is happened. He have an exchanged life. You know, when we come to the saving knowledge of Christ, when we encounter with Jesus, the life will be transformed. You know, that life is been an exchange life. That's the, that's the things we can see it in our, in this passage. The Paul was been encountered with Jesus and his life been been changed. You know, when life will be changed and there will be a lot of things will be changed, that we can see it. You know, I heard a story like this, one lady, she is a servant, she goes to house to house to clean and mop and all these things. And that's the way that she was living. And one day, she comes every day in a house and she used to be do that one, within two, three hours that she finish her job and she go away. Then, but the one day she came, she came to the house and she began to mop the house and clean the house and hours took and hours took and it is, the work is not finished. So the owner of the house and she, she asked her, "You know, you used to do your work fast and go away, what happened to you? Why, why you are taking long time? And why your work is not done?" And she said, "Yesterday, after the evening, I went for a meeting. Then I attended a meeting and then I, I heard the gospel. And I can, I came and encountered with Jesus and Jesus has changed my life. Now I came here and today to work and my life is not the life of a, the previous, I, I changed my life. So now I am doing this work. As I'm doing this work, I'm not doing to you, I'm doing unto the Lord. So before I just pretend, I'm sure I'm doing something that clean up that whatever things that you can see it, but I never clean nicely. I never go to the inside the rooms. I never go inside under the table, under the beds and clean or mop nicely. But now I done that one, it is taking time. So what happened, her life has been changed and he began to, she began to reflect the life which is any different. What I want to say is, when our life will be changed and you can see a reflection on our life. So that is happened and she have an exchanged life. You know, Paul's life has been changed. You know, that sometimes that people may not be recognized. When we read the Book of Acts, we are understanding there that they, they surprised, they thought that is this Paul, one who was a persecutor of Jesus, the, the people who follow the Jesus and one who is persecuting the churches and how he can be a, a man who is a favor with that. They were afraid of it, they're, they don't want to be accepted. But you know, when a, a life been been changed, you can see that in the, in the life of a people, that the life is in a worthy of living. You know, that is, that is the things which can understand. In that same passage, in the same verse, 524, it is say that it's a crucify our sinful nature, then saying that with its passions and desires. Now, the nature of the sin is very wonderful. And all the passion of the sin is very powerful. And when a person having exchanged life, his passion of regarding the sin will be changed. You know, the, the passion of the sin, it is very, very which, very much powerful. It can be through our emotion, it can be through our feelings and circumstances. But we need to be crucified that. And it is that, you know, that's why Paul saying in the same book, in Galatians chapter six, 14, say that the, the world is crucified to me and I'm to the world. He's saying that the world is crucified to me, I am to the world. You know, we need to be nailed on the, nailed to the cross. When we nailed to the cross, one of the things which we can understand is, you know, if we are nailed to cross, we can't do anything. If someone, if he, if someone is nailed and we can go and slap him, we can mock at him and we can dump any garbage upon him or anything we can do it. Whatever we can do, we can do it. But that person cannot be returned anything because he is nailed to the cross. So that kind of a life is, Paul is saying that, "When my old nature is nailed to the cross, I'm not reacting on the way that it was been reacted." You know, I heard a story like this. There was a drama is going and they were acting that Jesus crucifixion. And nowadays, the Easter Sunday is coming, you know, sometimes some churches, they used to have a programs like a drama and all. So they told that the drama is taking place. So they were putting the hands on the cross and pretending they are crucifying him and they're, they're acting the drama. So what happened is, while they were taking place and they, they used to mock at him, slap him and spit on him and all these things is take place. So what happened is, one day, while this going on and one person is really spit on. You know, the person is that, "Let me finish this drama, I will show you. You know, let me come out from the cross, then I, I can show you back." You know, sometimes, you know, we are not really crucified. When we come out and we will show our true nature. Yesterday, I was calling to one of my sister and she was sharing the, some of the problems in a place. And she said that, you know, there was a issue which is taking place, saying that the thing that they said is, you know, "I, I am good if some people are good to me. But if they show their attitude towards me like this, I'm going to show my real attitude. I will keep my Christianity away." You know, that kind of words means you are not really being crucified. Paul is saying that my passion, my, my, my passion and my desires is all being crucified on the cross. I'm not living anymore. It is Christ is lives in me. You know, that is the way that we need to be live. That is called dying ourselves. Our passions, our desires is on the cross and Christ is lives in us. You know, watch many one day, his friends and the people, they call him for a party and to play some cards and all these things. So we know that watch many very well and he said like this. He said, "I don't have my hands. I don't have my feet." So they are, "You have your hand, you have your feet." What you are talking about is that it is belongs to Christ. It's not me, it's not mine. The feet is not mine, the hand is not mine, it is belongs to Jesus. See, when we give our life to Jesus, when we surrender our life to Jesus, we surrender completely to God, all of it. And when we give all of it and, and God can use in mighty way. You know, there is a famous quote of a, DL Modi, he said that, you know, a person who is, what God can do, the person who is really committed to God, you know, he want to be that person. We know that DL Modi is used mightily in the way that God want because when he surrender his completely to God. You know, we need to be die ourselves, even even the desires of the sin. You know, our desires of sin isn't selfish. It's always that self is coming up. We know that it can be comes in a different ways. Sometimes with the self-respect and self-promotion and because of a power and any things that we can be, desires of the sin can become. But it can become to a normal people, even spiritual people can come. But we must know that we need to be crucified that on the cross. You know, it's very powerful that some of the desires of the sin is attacking us. We know the China, the war, the biggest war which is being made and it is a world wonder. After making that China war and it is been said that three times they failed. You know, enemies entered into the China and they conquered them. How it is happened? The reason is that they did not break the wall, they did not climb that wall or came inside, no. Someone who was a watchman opened the door for enemy to be come inside because the passion, they were bribed. And it is desire for the sin and the enemy could enter and destroy the, the nation. So we need to be very careful and we need to be crucified, the desires of sin. So our sinful nature need to be crucified. Our passion for the sin needs to be crucified. Our desires of the sin must be crucified. You know, the self-desire is come from the pride. We can know that the sin, the pride is some of the important aspect in the Satan's life. The pride only throw him out of the heaven. If the pride is a throw Satan out of the heaven, I'm thinking that the pride will be even, uh, killed and, uh, each and every one of it. We need to be crucified, you know. God will be punished that prideful heart. We know that in the book of Asia, chapter fourteen, twelve to seventeen, it is when we read and it is, there is a fight time, it is used. The Satan is say that I will, I will, I will. You know, it is all about I. When our self-desires comes and that is the one of the pride is starting there. You know, it can be happen in, in a physical man as well as spiritual man. There is a great preacher, we may, you may be knowing in, uh, in South Africa, his name is Nicholas Bangu. Nicholas Bangu was in a very, he's in a pastor for an assemblies of God, great preacher and lot of, uh, the work he has done and thousands of the people in his church. And not only that, he preached the crusades which is forty-five thousand and thousands and thousands, they gathered together. Wonderful preacher and a lot of healings taken place, lot of miracle taking place. God is mightily using this man. But one day his wife got sick and she admitted in the hospital. Her sickness is prolonged for a long time. As the sickness is gone through and years passed and the newspaper, they began to be, uh, say like this. One of the great man, one of the great healer, one of the wonderful man, he cannot, uh, he heal many people, but he cannot heal his wife. They put him down. They began to be questioned and they began to question his credibility and everything. You know, this Nicholas Binger, he was very unhappy, he was, he was very upset and he asked God, what is happening? What is happening to my ministry and all? Then it is been said like this, one day he went into the room. He went into the room, then he said that I, I went to the room, I never came out. What do you mean by that? He went to room, he died there? No. He said, I went into the room, I never came out because Nicholas died there. His ego died there, his self died there. When he come out and he come out as a new person, he crucified him there and he began to live the life of a Christ. And mightily he been used again. But I'm saying that the spiritual pride can be happen. The physical pride can happen and that is a desires of the sin. We need to be crucified. You know, we must be crucified ourselves on the cross and let the Christ lives in a, in us. The problem of mankind happens is a sinful desire. It's all selfish, even the family problems, it's happened because of the self-desires. And problem between the brothers and sisters, that's a problem of self-desires. Problem with relations, problem with the relatives and churches. All these things is comes from ourself. We desire something and we want to be promote something. And from there that all problems happen. We want to be solve the problem of our family. We deny ourselves, crucify ourselves. We want to be solve the problem of our, uh, relation with our relatives and you know, there are places that we need to be crucified. We need to be crucified. Let Christ begin to live in us. So the, that's why Paul is saying that I'm crucified with the Christ. I'm crucified with the Christ. Now I'll no longer live, Christ lives in me. I'm died to myself, I'm dying to myself and now Christ is lives in me. As we are topic is die to ourselves, we need to be die to ourselves for our sinful nature, for our passion and our desires and all this, we need to die. Then only Christ can live in us. When Christ began to live, the, the value that which we think it is been used, nothing. You know, when Paul is talking in the book of Philippians, chapter three, we see that what all the things is valued, he thought it is something very great. And he said that I count those things as a rubbish. Everything I leave behind, it's nothing for me now. Now I value that Christ is life for me. I want to believe he, for him and please him, that's all my motto is. You know, even though we can understand that Paul is a great man and he studied under the Gamaliel, he is a Roman citizen. You know, uh, as far as we see the history and some of other books which we can read, Paul wasn't, not a poor man and he was a rich man too. But he said goodbye to this whole prosperity and success and self-desires. And he said that I died, my now only, the aim is to be, go, goal is to the way, only to be peace God, for the sake of Christ, I'm just pushing through that. That was Paul is saying. You know, for me to live is a Christ, die is again, you know. So his life is completely totally changed and he is living for Christ. You know, the city start, you may be knowing that he is a great cricket player and known in, uh, in England. And he decided, he's born in a very rich family, have a plenty of money, lot of money. And he earned himself and it's been said that his father has an even property even in India that time. Such a rich man. When he committed his life to Jesus and he decided that all that wealth and everything that give to the Lord. You know, he was fix his marriage and without telling to the fiance, he went and sold all those things and he kept little. And he came and told to his fiance that, uh, dear, I sold all those things what I have. I know that we are going to get married, but before doing that, I didn't ask you because God told me I did it. But little I kept for you that we can survive. You know, his wife is more committed than, uh, city start, he, what she said is, you know, why did you keep that one also? If God has told you to give everything and you must have given everything. You know, he came into India for the ministry and due to the sickness and his wife's sickness, he has to go back. And he went back and he wife told that I am, I'm sick, I cannot do anything, but you want, whatever you want to do, do it. Then from there, he went to Africa for the ministry and he lived there. You know, I have seen the picture of the place he is born, it's a born, it's like a palace where he born. Then when he was dying and he lived in a hut, a small hut in Africa. And he put a name for that hut, it's a Buckingham Palace. You know, he died there. You know, one day he was sitting in the hut and doing the ministry in Africa. What happened is, and he had, he need to get some medicine from England. So one of the man, one journalist, he was coming to be, give the medicine and he was bringing the medicine to him. And when he came to the hut of city start and he was searching his word Bible and he is very carefully reading and reading, reading. So this man who's in a journalist, who don't believe in Jesus, he's an atheist. And he came and said that, hey, start, what you are searching? What you are searching in that book? It's look like that you lost something. And he said like this, I'm searching that is there anything that I left? Not obeyed in this word. You know, he said that give me the medicine. The life of a city start changed that man who wasn't a journalist. You know, city said, said like this. The statement he said is, only one life. A few brief years, each with burdens and hopes and fears. Each with its place, I must fulfill. Living for self or living in the Lord's will. Only one life, it will soon will be past. Only what done for Christ will last. My dear brothers and sisters, what we do for Christ will last, everything what we achieve in this world will be, being gone away. We need to be live for Christ. What all the things we do for Christ will be last. You know, Paul saying in the Romans, chapter twelve, words, uh, one and two, is that I present my body as a living sacrifice, you know, pleasing unto God. That's the, that's the one which we need to be. God gives his own self to us and we must be offer ourselves complete to him. That was God want us to do, to live for him, for his, uh, let Christ is live in us. And when we, Christ live in us and we are clothed with Christ, in Galatians, chapter three, twenty-seven, Paul is saying the, so we are clothed with Christ. When we walk around, the people see the Christ in us. Jesus in us, in our school, in our college, in our workplace, neighborhood, in our, with our friends, wherever we are. When we are clothed with the Christ Jesus, they are see Jesus in our life. One man said it is, we are the fifth gospel. You know, we have a four gospel in the New Testament. Matthew, Mark, Luke, John. But we are the fifth one. People are not reading the New Testament, they are not reading the gospels in this, uh, in the Bible, they may not be read. But when they read our life, they look at and they see, they look Jesus in us. They want to read our life and see that Jesus. So that is called the life for Christ, live for Christ. Not living for ourselves, living for Christ. When we, you know, even as some Amidavachans or, you know, son Abhishek or Ambani's son, and somebody walk around, we used to say that, oh, so-and-so person's son is going. And we, we point out, we say that, you know, we take the identity of their father and put it on them and say that so-and-so's son is going. But when we walk around and see our life, will the people can say that, yes, the child of God is walking, he's a really child of God. He's a really God's child. In our life is matters and people are watching that one. You know, when we live a life of a Christ or when we are living in Christ or living for Christ and we are living the life of a Christ in us. And he's living through us and we are, we are expressing or, um, showing the power of Christ in us, the peace of Christ, the purpose and the passion and perseverance, all these things we are expressing Christ's life in us. You know, Romans eight twenty-nine, we see that we want to be show that image of his son. We are carrying the image of his son. And Paul is saying that I carry the mark of cross. You know, we are branded people, we are, we are, we are branded with the Christ and the cross on us. We shall be, you know, first John, chapter three, two, say that we should be like, look like him, we shall be like him. We must believe the life of a Christ. And his life must be expressed through us. But the problem is that to die ourselves and live for Christ, how can we do that? Is it with our strength, we can do it? No, not at all. That's why Paul, when we come back to the Galatians, chapter, uh, two, twenty, it say that I have been crucified with the Christ and I no longer live, but Christ lives in me. Then Paul saying that the life I live in the body, I live by faith in the Son of God. How can we live a crucified life? How can we live, how, how can we die to ourselves and live for Christ? Only by faith. Only by faith, that was Paul say that, by faith, this, in the Son of God who love me and gave his life for me. Jesus is gave his life for us. And we believe that and through the faith we live for Christ. Not only by faith, by the Spirit. When we read Romans seven, seven, twenty, you know, by spirit we live for Christ. You know, it's not our strength, we are not able to do it. With the strength, with our strength, with our ability, we cannot live a crucified life. We cannot to die to ourselves and it is impossible. Only by the Spirit of God that we can live. And we need to be live for Christ. We know that crucifixion is done not by ourselves, you know. Crucifixion has to be done by someone else. Paul is saying that I was crucified. I was crucified with Christ. You know, somebody has to be crucified. Who has to? That God himself and with his spirit. By faith, when we allow and the Holy Spirit is crucify our desires and make us to be live for Jesus, that we may live a life pleasing unto him. My dear brothers and sisters, as we come together, you know, together to be study this such, this word, to die ourselves, to live for Christ. Only the things that we can do it if you are put a faith in Jesus. If you allow the Holy Spirit to be, to be, take control of our life. It is not possible with your effort. You maybe try all day. One day you maybe try to be put yourself into, uh, deny yourself, your desires, passion of your sin. All these things you maybe try, but the next day that you will be continue to live like that. It is not possible unless until you will completely surrender your life to Jesus. Allow the Holy Spirit to be control your life. Then only you can be, then only, then only you can be, live a life pleasing unto God. Make yourself to die and that we can live for Christ. The most important things which we can do is to be put our life in the hands of Jesus. Surrender our life. If, if that is not happen in our life. You know, maybe by traditions, maybe by name, maybe by knowing or going to the church, maybe Sunday schools and all these things. And you maybe know the facts, that doesn't make you to be get a power over the sin. You need to be come into encounter with Jesus. Paul wasn't righteous, Paul was, Paul was, Paul was living a, a holy life according to the scripture, he thinks. He was reading and he was studied under the Gamaliel, he knows the theology and he is a member of Saninrim, he goes to Sanogo. And all the Jewish customs he practice and he does everything. You know, but what Paul is saying that I am the worst among the sinners. By the mercy of God, that God has saw me and he saved me. Make me his child. You know, my dear brothers, you know, doing all those religious things that does doesn't make that you can deny yourself and live for Christ. No, unless until we completely surrender to Jesus and by faith, by the spirit, then only we can be, live a victorious life. That we can die to ourselves and we can live for Christ. You know, Sadhguru Sundar Singh, one of the missionary, great missionary of India. We can see his life and he, we maybe studied his stories and all. And he said, it is easy to die for Christ. It is hard to live for him. Said it is easy to die for Christ, it's hard to live for him. But live for Christ means die daily. Die daily. You know, we need to be crucified. You know, we need to be crucify ourselves daily. Crucifixion, they say that sometimes one person is crucified, he may not die all of sudden. It is take even sometimes thirty-six hours to be a person to be died on the cross. But he's been crucified there, surely he will be died. I want to say this, we cannot live Monday to be Saturday, our own life. And Sunday comes to crucified life, no. We need to be crucified completely daily. We need to die ourselves daily and live for Christ. That's the things we, God want, now that's why Paul said. See, Paul saying that, I have been crucified with the Christ. When he encounter with Jesus, he been crucified with the Christ. And no longer I live, you know, all his passion, sinful desire, and everything is been crucified. No longer I live, my desire, my will, nothing is living, but Christ lives in me. My, now my will and purpose and everything is what is Christ wants me to do. And Christ lives in me. Therefore, I live in the body, I live by the faith. This is only happen by the faith, in the Son of God, who love me and gave himself for me. And this Jesus is the God of a Paul, and he is the same Lord of ours. And he can do same thing to us also. And let's live life in Christ and die to ourselves and our desires. May God bless you through these verses. Thank you for this time, thank you for inviting me, and God bless you. We have. Can you hear me? If you have any questions, or anything you want to ask, you can.
Thank you, uncle, for the session, it was really lovely and nice, and thank you for your time. Also, the participants who, whoever joined, everyone, thank for listening. Who, if you have any questions, please ask uncle. You can also put it on the chat box.
Great day you have given for all of us, master. Yes, Lord, we praise you and worship you for this beautiful time, yes, master. Wonderful time, what a great blessed time you have given for us, Lord, thank you so much for that, Lord. This evening, Lord, you blessed, really, Lord, you blessed your children, Pastor Jason, and blessed it with your abundant spirit, filled with your abundant spirit, you used him mightily. Thank you so much for that, Lord, you spoken to all of us, master, you opened our heart. Thank you so much for that, Lord, Holy Spirit, God, you speak, you spoken to all of us, thank you so much for that, Lord. Yes, master, really, Lord, many times, Lord, we are failing to live for you, dying for ourselves. Yes, Lord, in the many areas in our life, master, we are completely, utterly failed, Lord. Yes, master, we are making you to cry because of our failing, Lord, many times failing life. Yes, Lord, we are not living for you, but, Lord, please forgive us, Lord, what a sin to know, holy blood, master. Yes, Lord, please help us to die, really, Lord, in all our, whatever you go and pride, yes, Lord. Many times, Lord, yes, master, please, Lord, please forgive us, Lord, what a sin to know, holy blood, master. This evening, Lord, you spoken to all of us right away, thank you so much for that, Lord. Master, today I was fly, today I was Lord, like city, Lord, Lord, really, Lord. Lord, please help us to die for ourselves, and also help us to live for you, master, yes, Lord. For that, we need your one and grace, master, yes, Lord, we need your resurrection grace, Lord. Yes, Lord, this evening, master, we are requesting you, we are begging you, Lord, we need your help, Lord. Without your abundant grace, without your help, Lord, we can't live for you, master, we can't die for ourselves, Lord. Please bless all of us, Lord. Yes, Lord, in the days to come, please, Lord, help us to live for you, and help us to die for ourselves, Lord. Please, Lord, please, Lord, you only help us, Lord. Yes, master, and also, Lord, we are, we are, Lord, submitting all of us into your mighty hands, Lord. Those who joined for the meeting today, please bless everyone spiritually, Lord, and physically also, more and more. Please bless their work and bless their studies, and, Lord, bless their, all their academics, Lord. Yes, master, and Lord, we praise you and worship you for this beautiful ministry. Yes, the ministry, you a love bliss in the state of Goa, thank you so much for that, Lord, you are continuing this ministry. Yes, master, please, Lord, you are blessing us spiritually through this ministry, thank you so much for that, Lord. Yes, master, once again, Lord, praying for Pastor Jason's family, master. Really, Lord, you are using the family here in Goa, for, Lord, for expansion of your kingdom, thank you so much for the. You please, that's a family, and fulfill their need, believe you, days to come, they will be blessed, blessed to many people, thank you so much for that, Lord. And also, Lord, Holy Spirit, God, really, Lord, you help to deal also, to lead this meeting, thank you so much for that, Lord. You only led her, thank you so much for that, Lord. Yes, master, once again, Lord, we are submitting all of us into your mighty hands, yes, master. You have given a very, very good network connection for all of us, Lord. Lord, thank you so much for that, Lord, in Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, everyone, thank you very much, Brother Samson, and thank you, Dineel, thank you, everyone. And inviting me, giving me time, praise God.
It's a privilege.
Thank you so much, Pastor Jason, thank you so much for, yeah, taking our last minute invitation, and preparing the session very well, and engraving and enriching us to hear, I will study. We really praise for, for the session today and the ministry. May God continue to bless you and use you as a family for this establishment of peace, wisdom, and glory. Thank you so much.
Thank you.